Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I am City Council President from Minneapolis. And before we have our meeting, we take time to recognize great efforts going on in our community, individuals sometimes. And this morning, we have two groups of people that we want to honor. And so I'm going to turn the mic over to my colleague, Councilmember Quincy, who is the Chair of the Ways and Means Committee, because the first item that we have is honoring the people that do payroll.
Spoiler alert, huh? Good morning, everyone. My name is John Quincy, Minneapolis City Councilmember for the 11th Ward. On behalf of all of my colleagues on the City Council and the Mayor's Office, we're about to recognize some great people doing some great work. It's my pleasure to recognize the members of the city's payroll team, a division of the Finance and Property Services Department. This team is led by payroll manager Lisa Brown, and under the oversight of Connie Griffith, our city controller. These men and women mostly work behind the scenes to ensure all city employees, temporary and seasonal workers, vendors, contractors, suppliers, and everyone else receiving a check from the city of Minneapolis is paid accurately, on time, and without problems. As you might imagine, it's an incredible responsibility, and they pull it off like clockwork with little fanfare recognition. So it's good to give them a little recognition once in a while. This resolution gives them some much deserved attention and recognizes their valuable contributions to the city enterprise and to our local and regional economies. I spoke with President Liz Walensky of the Park Board the other day, and she wanted to extend her appreciation for the work of the Finance Team and Payroll Division, because they are the ones that write the checks for all of the Park Board as well. And she's not able to join us today, but she extends her good wishes. I'd like to read that resolution and invite the team to introduce themselves. I'd like to recognize Connie and Lisa for some brief remarks right afterwards. Come on up. Come on, guys. These are all those people that write those checks, do all that work, and have been putting in tireless hours with the conversion of our new Comet system and that wonderful world of ERP. So we'll get to this in a second. Lot of crowd. Thank you. Here's the resolution. Whereas the American Payroll Association and its more than 21,000 members have launched a nationwide public awareness campaign to recognize the more than 156 million people who work in the United States. And whereas payroll professionals support the American system and contribute directly to the economic health of local and regional communities and the security and stability of American families by ensuring compliance with the myriad of federal and state wage and tax laws, paying wages, reporting worker earnings, paying into the unemployment insurance system, providing information related to child support enforcement, and carrying out various financial reporting and depositing requirements. And whereas payroll professionals in the city of Minneapolis play a critical role in effective management of public funds that contribute to the delivery of municipal services and programs by assuring the timely and accurate processing of payments to more than 5,000 city employees, as well as vendors, contractors, temporary, seasonal workers, suppliers, and others in each pay cycle in each year. And whereas Minneapolis payroll professionals recently completed a successful enterprise conversion to the new financial management system known as Comet, which has required extraordinary attention for planning, organization, training, and transition to assure a seamless changeover with no interruption to municipal services and operations, which is worthy of commendation. And whereas National Payroll Week is regularly celebrated each year during the week of Labor Day, which is the week of September 7 through the 11th, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council hereby declare September 7 through 11th, 2015, to be National Payroll Week in the city of Minneapolis and extend their sincere thanks, appreciation, and gratitude to the men and women of the city's payroll division within the Finance Property Services Department for their commitment to the highest principles of public service. Good job, guys. Thank you all. Connie or Lisa, if you'd like to make any remarks, please do.
The only comment I'd like to make is payroll is an extremely tough job. It's something that we do every two weeks, and I cannot do it without my team. And here is my team. There are some people that are missing that I would like to recognize. One is Jan Helverson. She does the payroll for the Park Board, as well as my support team, Barbara Peyton with HR, Mohammed Muslim with my IT support, and Roman Grinberg. It is an extremely major team effort. So thank you.
And I think I want to reiterate what Lisa just said. This team has come together, especially with the ERP, the implementation of the upgrade and that type of thing. They have done an outstanding job of getting the payroll out timely and accurately, and they work together in a collaborative teamwork way, and they are a great team. And I just can't tell you how much we appreciate what they've accomplished and appreciate you recognizing that today.
Well, thanks very much. I do want to acknowledge Casey Carl, our city clerk, who brought this Payroll Week to our attention. And what a great coincidence that we've had this transition to the new Comet system in Payroll Week and on Labor Day. So thank you all.
Lisa. Thank you. And the next event we would like to recognize is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in Minnesota. And my colleague Lisa Bender is going to read the resolution and give us a few remarks.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you for the staff and volunteers from the American Cancer Society who are here today. It's always an honor to bring forward these resolutions regarding breast cancer awareness. I'm a five-year survivor of breast cancer. And for me, awareness is really about making sure that we keep in mind the public policy commitments that we need to make for all cancers, including breast cancer. And that's about funding research. It's about public health and prevention. It's about reaching all women, especially our low-income women, for prevention services. And for me, especially this item of research is really important, because I was able to have a drug that I took, Herceptin, which doubled my chances of survival. And that drug was not available only five years before my diagnosis. So it's a really big deal when the federal government makes these decisions about research funding. It affects people like me. So with that, the resolution, recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day, whereas there are more than 3.1 million women in the United States living with a history of invasive breast cancer, and whereas this year 3,820 women in Minnesota are expected to be diagnosed with breast cancer and 620 to die from the disease, whereas breast cancer ranks as the second cause of cancer death in women, and whereas breast cancer screening has been found to reduce breast cancer mortality, and when breast cancers are detected at an early stage, survival is 99%. And whereas since 2002, approximately 80% of Minnesota women ages 40-plus have received a mammogram in the previous two years, and whereas only 46% of uninsured women in Minnesota received a recent mammogram in 2010. And whereas the uninsured, underinsured, insured, and underserved are least likely to get screening for breast cancer, which means they are more likely to be diagnosed at a late stage when chances of survival drop to 24%. And whereas in Minnesota, non-Hispanic white women are at the greatest risk of being diagnosed with breast cancer, but African-American women are at the greatest risk of dying of breast cancer. And whereas women ages 15 to 54 die more frequently from breast cancer than any other cancer, and African-American women under the age of 35 die from breast cancer at three times the rate of white women. And whereas the federal government has invested more than $1.8 billion in breast cancer research since 2010, leading to the discovery of life-extending drugs, and whereas there is no cure for breast cancer, now therefore be it resolved that the city council in the city of Minneapolis, that October 2015 is hereby declared to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Minneapolis, and that October 13, 2015, is hereby declared to be Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the city of Minneapolis. And we'll also be lighting the Lowry Bridge and the 35W Bridge in pink and then metastatic breast cancer colors. If you'd like to say something, you're very welcome. So thank you, Councilwoman Bender and the Minneapolis City Council members. We are incredibly thankful for the increasing network of support that helps us to bring education of breast cancer awareness, detection, and prevention to the Minneapolis city community. This network is a reason why, since 1989, 35% of breast cancer death rates, we've decreased that death rate by 35%, which is an incredible number. And in addition, our children's generation, Lisa, your children, are living in a generation that know less cancer deaths. And that's the work that we're doing with the American Cancer Society. We're making sure that we're bringing more research funding, more education, and detection and prevention to our communities. And so we thank you so much for helping us to grow that network of awareness. I also invite everybody to continue to grow your awareness and support by joining us on October 10 at Lake Nacomis, right here in Minneapolis, where we will be walking for the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer and continuing to grow our network of support. So thank you so much.
order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Palmisano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Gidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
We have a quorum present, all members present this morning. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda? Seeing none, motion to adopt the agenda is in order.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting and adjourned session of August 21, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. And next, we have the reports of the standing committees, and the first is Committee of the Whole, and that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President Elizabeth Gidden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the agenda today. It is approving, adopting a set of community indicators to serve as the basis for city gold-focused results Minneapolis reports, and I'll move approval of this item.
Councilmember Gidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Gidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Community Development and Regulatory Services Report, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. There are nine items on our agenda for approval this morning. Item number one is the License and Consumer Services Agenda for this cycle. Items two, three, four, and five are recommendations with regard to operating conditions for various businesses. Item number six is a bond resolution for the National Bone Marrow Project. Item seven is negotiating the rights for 800 Washington with M.A. Mortensen. That's seven. Item eight is applications to the NEA for two different NEA grants. And item number nine is the Downtown Commons Concept Design Approval and Implementation. I'll move items one through eight for approval first.
Councilmember Goodman has moved items one through eight on the Community Development Regulatory Services Report. Anyone want to discuss any of those items, pull anything off? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmisano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Gidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
Those items have been adopted. On item nine, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number nine is the Downtown East Concept Design and Approval. As many of you know, this has to do with the design itself, as well as authorizing Green Minneapolis to start the fundraising campaign to support the design. It's authorizing agreements with Ryan and Green Minneapolis for construction of the enhancements, as well as some loan disbursement issues. It also relieves the project from $2 million, or actually relieves the fundraising campaign from $2 million of design and project management costs that have been authorized by the city. I understand that there are some amendments, so perhaps I will move approval, and then the amendments can come forward.
Councilmember Goodman has moved item nine. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I stated during Cal, the purpose of this motion is transparency. One, and two, this is the right thing to do for the long-term financial success of the park. We initially anticipated to have $2 million that was allocated for purposes of a design for Hargreaves &amp; Associates replenished. Subsequently, it became apparent that we could generate more revenues and trigger more financial contributions to the commons if we had skin in the game on top of the 18.8 million that is the financing mechanism. And I want to make really clarify here, the 18.8 million is financing, not funding. We fully anticipated getting that repaid through parking revenues. And I'll also add that the amount of property taxes that are generated from the surrounding area because of this park is $40 to $45 million over the repayment of the bond period. So this is not insignificant money. And, you know, there's an overarching theme here, and that overarching theme is we're thinking big. And it's very, very easy for people who are not inherently involved and directly involved to question a deal and to poke holes. But I appreciate this council and the previous councils' willingness to think big about what could be a magnificent asset for downtown and the entire city. That being said, we got some excellent questions and comments and valid concerns from colleagues that I hope will be addressed in the form of, one, a staff direction that is before you, that Councilmembers Bender and myself are bringing forward, and then I believe the Councilmember Bender will be addressing an additional amendment after I discuss it. So right in front of you should have a staff direction. Does three things. First, we are bringing forward a list of potential, we want staff to bring forward a list of potential funding mechanisms for operations and maintenance of the commons. We want them to take a look at other urban parks around the country, look at the funding mechanisms, whether it's public financing, private financing, revenues generated from concessions, new legislation, or contributions directly from private entities. We want to make sure that these are all looked at with an eye for what is a long-term reliable fix. Second, we need an update of the number of days that either are fully publicly accessible or two, that the MSFA and the Vikings have the right to book events. There have been a lot of things that have changed since this stadium legislation, well, since the park use agreement was initially entered. Just to name a couple, we're not getting a soccer team anymore at the Vikings Stadium. One. Two, there's a high likelihood that the Vikings will be tenting the medical examiner's parcel and not the commons. And three, we should be delineating between the eastern block and the western block, because even if the eastern block is being used, there are many instances when the western block is 150% accessible. And then the final piece, item number three, is to explore both the desirability and feasibility of reopening the park use agreement between the city and the MSFA. There are shortfalls of this agreement. There are pieces that would benefit the public tremendously if they were improved, and we are directing staff to take a look at this and then come back. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I really appreciate the collaboration with all my colleagues on this issue and getting to a win.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to move an amendment, which is in front of you, to this item number nine. The amendment has two pieces. The first is item A, where the amendment adds language. So I'll read the full statement of item A as it would be amended. So approving the concept design for the commons contingent on a final maintenance funding plan. If maintenance funding gaps are identified, staff will return to the city council with an updated concept design. And then the second piece of the amendment is under item F, which is reserving for the city council the authority to approve the operator of the commons as well as the commons' annual budget. So I'd like to move those amendments and then have some comments.
Councilmember Bender has moved the amendment that's in front of you. And so, Councilmember Bender, I'm not clear, what are B, C, D, and E in your amendment? Are they...
Existing language.
Existing language. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
That's correct, Madam President. So, thank you, Madam President. So I raise a lot of questions and concerns, I think, as many colleagues did during the discussion at Cal, and I appreciate Councilmember Frye's willingness to address them, along with the Mayor's Office and others who have been very involved in this process. You know, we're at a really specific point in a long conversation about Downtown East, and the decision was made a couple of years ago to finance a public space here. At this point, we're either going to have a large grass area or a very fancy public space, or something in between. And given the amendments, as well as the staff direction, I feel comfortable using these already identified financing tools that were already in place for the commons in order to contribute to the design of the park, because I agree that it increases the ability for us to raise the private dollars that are needed to make this more than just a grassy space. I think that's a very important element at this point in the project, that we not end up with just sort of lawn there. But my concern all along is that we not end up with something that we can't maintain, and that we not stick Minneapolis taxpayers with a huge maintenance bill. Because at the end of the day, if we have a park built there and there's no identified maintenance funding, it's taxpayers that are going to be left with the bill. So I think these are questions that have to be answered now, or as soon as possible, before this moves forward farther down a path of inevitability, and before we commit to design elements that we cannot maintain. So the amendments and the staff direction, co-authored with Councilmember Frye, are aimed at making sure that we solve the maintenance piece as soon as possible, and we amend the designs as needed. You know, if you think about the most wonderful public spaces, they're not always the most expensive and fanciest spaces. The maintenance and programming, in particular, of public spaces has so much to do with their effectiveness, the ability to attract the people that really make public spaces special. So I can't support maintenance becoming an afterthought. And I know this is in line with a lot of the folks who've been most involved, including Councilmember Frye and the Mayor's Office, and the folks that are raising the funding to build the park. No one wants to leave the maintenance question unanswered. The second piece of the amendment is just clarifying the role of the city council. We will have future actions related to the governance structure of operations of the park. We will have future actions related to the budget of operating and maintaining the park. But I just wanted to make that clear at this point, that those decisions will come back through the city council. Thank you.
On Councilmember Bender's amendment, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to echo what Councilmember Bender suggested. We do want to have something that's both enduring and endearing in terms of its design. But at the end of the day, we don't want something that is not maintainable, just because we want to have bells and whistles and maybe faddish features. And so I think, just as we're going to be called upon to have financial discipline throughout this whole process and at the end of it, we need to have design discipline as well. And I encourage people to support Bender's amendment.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Bender's amendment? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. Back to Councilmember Frye's staff direction. Councilmember Frye, any further information?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No further information. I appreciate that this is a wonderful mechanism to ensure maximum public accessibility to the park and also protecting the public pocketbook.
Councilmember Kano, on the staff direction.
Thank you, Madam President. So I have a question, which might be either for the city attorney or maybe Councilmember Frye. I just want to make sure that, in terms of usage, public usage, this project has sometimes been communicated about as quasi-public, and so I just want to make sure that people still have, the general public, the taxpayers, whose dollars are going into this project, will still have access to doing public demonstrations here, if they want to have rallies, if they want to have events, that there's no funny business where we're going to have to ask permission, you know, for the Vikings to allow, you know, Black Lives Matter to host a rally or some kind of a public gathering. So who could help answer some of these questions about public usage of this space, if indeed it's going to be owned by the city of Minneapolis?
I think the best person to answer that would be Ms. Segal. Ms. Segal?
Madam Chair and Councilmember Kano, this is a fully public park. So the First Amendment would apply equally to the commons as any Minneapolis park and recreation board-owned park or any other public, you know, green spaces owned by a public entity. So it is in no manner private. It is subject to all requirements of the First Amendment.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to speak to the general motion, not the staff direction. If it's the wrong time, I can move back.
Why don't we, that's fine. Let's deal with the staff direction, pass that, and then we'll go back to the original motion, then Councilmember Goodman's motion. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. I really appreciate the staff direction. I also appreciate the amendment to the motion. Even if ultimately I might not be supporting the full action, I just wanted to acknowledge the good work of Councilmembers Frye and Bender in doing this, and it feels like some of the concerns that I raised are being addressed. I appreciate especially number three, exploring the desirability and feasibility of reopening the park use agreement between the city and the sports facilities authority, MSFA. I would prefer that we opened that and looked at it before we made any further commitments. I also think that I'd like to know what the final funding plan is and get some of these things sorted out again. I'm concerned that we won't have another opportunity to influence this in the best manner, but I'm still very appreciative of this, and we'll certainly be supporting the staff direction, and I'd like all three aspects of it.
Councilmember Gidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Well, I wanted to acknowledge my thanks to both Councilmember Frye and Councilmember Bender for these staff directions and changes that have come forward. I will say that they are helpful to the overall kind of package of consideration, although, and probably will allow me to vote for the underlying action, although I remain a bit challenged and skeptical of our analysis of what will be our final contributions to this space. I, as I said on Wednesday, was a supporter of the Downtown East as it originally came forward, with a major reason for that being the addition of a public space in an area of our city that really needs public green spaces. One of my concerns with how this action came forward, and again, I think these directions from Councilmembers Fry and Bender go a long ways, to the council, once again, becoming more involved in having more oversight over space that ultimately we own and we need to have some control over how much will be the ongoing investment, if there is any, what will be the maintenance costs, and then what should be the final design of the park once we get our arms around this a bit more. So I have been concerned about what feels like a hole in that area. This really does help. I also appreciate the action that directs staff to explore the desirability and feasibility of reopening the park use agreement. I think based on some further information that has been happening about how many days are required for different events the Vikings have, this really deserves a strong look at this agreement again. So I appreciate that that is on the list. And again, I think that this helps us have a more appropriate role in ongoing oversight of this important public space.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to speak on the main motion.
Okay.
In 2013...
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I'm...
No?
Okay. Is there any more discussion on the staff direction? Because I have Councilmember Yang ahead of you, Councilmember Goodman. Any more discussion on the staff direction? Seeing none, all in approval say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. With that, we have the main motion in front of us as amended and with the staff direction. And so I'm going to recognize Councilmember Yang, who is in line, and then go down to Councilmember Goodman and down the list. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Presidents. I was the president for the committee the whole meeting when we had that really interesting conversation about this project. And, you know, with all due respect, you know, I look at this and I just feel like in January, when we approved a contract for Hargraves, you know, what was told to us and what was told to us on Wednesday or just, you know, this past, or two Tuesdays ago, are completely different things. And, you know, for me, I mean, the most offensive part of this is the representation in January of this year that we would be reimbursed for $1.8 million for the Hargraves contract. And now we're giving this away as a donation, or, you know, in other words, for us to have skin in the game and, you know, without going through proper committee processes. You know, and my thing is, you know, if we have that kind of money to just give away, I mean, I can think of 100 different causes that are more worthy. If we don't have skin in the game already without this $2 million donation, I don't know what skin probably is. Because, I mean, we've done a lot. We've bent over backwards on the Viking Stadium and the commons. So, I mean, I have this idea that we don't have skin in the game. I mean, I don't think anybody can tell us that we have no skin in the game. The city has given enough money to the Vikings and the parking ramps and infrastructure and open space that will serve the stadium. I mean, we've done a lot. Now is the time for the council to state clearly that we can't give any more city funding to capital improvements for maintenance and operations of the commons. You know, and I know that I might be in the minority when we take this vote, but I want to say there has to be a point when we recognize that there's a black hole that we're going into and that we can hit the brakes. If this time isn't the time, I hope that we aren't already in a black hole and that maybe there will be a next time. You know, and my last parting comments is, you know, if we worked this hard for one thing, like we've worked for the Vikings, be it eliminating homelessness or revitalizing North Minneapolis, you know, maybe we might have succeeded. I feel like the more attention we give to this, the less we give to other needy parts of the city and the less we give to other needy issues in the city of Minneapolis. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. In 2013, in the middle of a contentious election year, a majority of people on the city council voted for the Viking Stadium. I was not one of those people, and I think a few people who are still here were mixed on the issue. But at the very end of the year, trying to make something really good happen, our mayor, R.T. Ryback, came up with a plan that I think people felt was a pretty big vision, to figure out how to make sure that Viking Stadium wasn't sitting out there on its own. And that is how the entire situation with Wells Fargo moving its corporate headquarters and 5,000 jobs from places around the metropolitan area came to be. And as you move 5,000 workers into an area where there's going to be a large piece of public infrastructure and hopefully about 1,200 residents, putting in a public amenity like a park, in a city where we brag about the fact that every residence is within six blocks of a park, made a lot of sense. But as many of you know, in fact, a majority of you who ran for election that year, there were many pieces left undone. And in a transition from one mayor to another, where the current mayor voted against the Viking Stadium, but for the downtown east project, all of this was handed to her office, her staff, and the remaining seven of six of us who are here to try to figure out how to make this an amenity in our community. So this was a pretty big vision and all of the details were not worked out. And now we're 18 months later trying to figure out how to work out many of those details. I'll note that Kevin Carpenter, Susan Siegel, Chuck Lutz, and the downtown business community have done a mass majority of this work for us. To say that any of us have been sitting at the table negotiating this deal with some very difficult partners would be incorrect. We have our professional staff to figure out what's best for the city and we have to, at the end, make a decision yes or no. We made a decision from the public point of view that we were going to try to make this a public park. The use agreement didn't come out as well as we would have liked. And now that's going to be reopened. In addition to that, the Vikings have heard our concern about this. I think they've been somewhat embarrassed by the fact that it's going to take 48 hours potentially to put up and take down tents. And they've worked to find a different location for those tents, potentially providing us with more days of use within the public park. We've heard the public, as it pertains to not wanting a big pile of mud, but also not thinking that just having an open green space made a lot of sense, but to have a really amazing design like other cities have in their central business districts where there are a lot of people who are in need of green space. So I think that in many ways, this is the right direction to go. There have been some bumps in the road, and I really appreciate Councilmember Bender's specific amendment with regard to getting a full funding agreement on the maintenance. I do think this is an ongoing issue and it has to be addressed. I appreciate the fact that we reserve authority to say if we don't like that agreement, then we might feel we have to take a different action and everyone will be in a position to determine if they want to take a different action later. It's still hanging out there that perhaps seven, eight, nine people might say, "We're not paying for half of the maintenance of that park." And if we can't figure out a different way to do it, then we might not put in that Hargraves design. So that issue is still out there and it's hanging over the heads of all of us who are working on this agreement. I want to note, as I know other people have, not one penny of property taxpayer money is going into this park. We are financing the park through revenue bonds generated, revenue generated by parking. There are people who don't love that idea either. Maybe there'll be less cars in the future. Maybe we'll have driverless cars. They can drive themselves into the parking lots. Maybe everyone will take Ubers. Lots of people will take transit, whatever happens. But I do think when you have 5,000 employees, 1,200 residents, developments surrounding the park, the measly number of parking spaces there will probably be used. It's a risk, as Councilmember Colliton said. It's a risk that perhaps only government in many ways is willing to take, but we've taken that risk and we expect some rewards and some promises on the other end of it. And the promise, as Councilmember Fry has so notably said, is that all of the developments surrounding this park is private. Every bit of that property tax base is going right back into our tax base and the tax base of the county and the schools. We're not even, hopefully, thanks to me, there are no TIF deals being done in this area. Not one project is happening in this area with the result of tax increment. No one would even dare ask for it, knowing our opinion. So we're going to have a fairly significant tax base generated by all the plots surrounding this park. Not one penny of that money is going into this park. This park is being paid for out of revenue bond financing. So it is not property tax money. So there are some misinformation out there. Hopefully, this will correct some of that misinformation. I think that we need to keep moving forward, just as we did in 2013. We didn't have all the answers then and we still don't have all of the answers today. But if we're going to have a big vision, we need to continue to move forward. And so I want to thank the mayor's office, Councilmember Fry, Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Bender, who have done quite a bit of work on this in a very short period of time to get to this, to the point where I believe a majority of people on the council will support it today.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to echo that recognition as well. I really want to thank the mayor's office. I want to thank Councilmember Fry, Council President Johnson, and Councilmember Bender for their work on this. I think debate and disagreement over details is not the same thing as the underlying subject matter. And don't mistake disagreement over item 9E on our agenda for disagreement over a downtown park. I think we all recognize that a downtown park is an incredible amenity for our city, that the success of downtown is tied into all the rest of the city. And I, for one, support green space downtown for the recreation, restoration, and enjoyment of the public. And even though I won't support item 9E, I think that this park moving forward is a really important amenity for our city. I'm excited to see it get built. And, you know, for our potential donors out there that are wondering about the skin in the game, I think, you know, if this was any other park, I don't think we'd probably be having this debate if this was another downtown park under different circumstances. I think one of the reasons for that, and I'm reminded by my constituents who send me emails anytime downtown east comes up as a subject, is all the skin in the game that the city does have. And I just want to remind potential donors of that. We have hundreds of millions of dollars in the anchor for downtown east, which is the stadium. We have millions of dollars foregone in potential property taxes for this park specifically that's going to act as a great amenity. Staff secured 1.5 million in taxpayer dollars for demo work on this park. We've spent countless staff time. We have liability and risk in this, not to mention all the other tens of millions of dollars we give every year to support a thriving downtown because it matters. And we believe in it. And that is skin in the game. So we have that in there and I hope that our donors step up out there. I hope that the corporate community steps up. I know you have a stake in the success of this downtown park and downtown and Minneapolis and our region overall. I hope you step up and help support this park and make sure that this vision is a reality because people keep choosing to live in Minneapolis because of amenities like this. Companies keep choosing to locate here because of the people that are in our city and the great amenities that we have. So once again, thanks to the mayor's office, to my colleagues, Councilmember Fry, Council President Johnson, and Councilmember Bender for their great work on moving this forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I want to acknowledge all the work that Councilmember Fry had to put into managing this project as well as the mayor, even though they weren't around when we kind of got ourselves into this mess originally. And so I want to be as supportive and respectful as I can. I'm not going to be supporting the action and I just wanted to acknowledge some of my disappointment in the design and what the park or the commons is going to be. People who've followed my comments on this for a long time and with the mayor, I kept stressing this, we need something that's going to serve the youth in the area and in the community. We need some kind of amenities that will attract people and serve the families. Yesterday, I was driving around looking at the size of a typical tot lot with a swingset and a climber and a slide, and they're relatively small. There's definitely space on here for something that could serve the families and people serving people. Originally, in meetings with the mayor, we talked about a full-size soccer facility. If you go to Curry Park in Cedar Riverside, you can see the small soccer field that they have and the need and demand and the struggle they have to get all the services they need. I have a vision that downtown will actually someday have a youth center where people can go and play basketball and where we'll say, "Teams are welcome here. Take your Metro Pass that we've given you through the school system. Come downtown. Learn how to swim, play basketball, do all these activities." And I think the commons, the armory, all that space and all that area, and the Vikings that should be supporting us in this effort gave us a real opportunity to do that. And I think we're not taking advantage of that opportunity. But even if we don't get it at the commons and even if we don't have it now, remember there is still going to be a need there. And maybe there's somewhere in the future and someplace where we can still have a youth center and we can figure out how can we have downtown also be a welcoming place for kids and families with infants and toddlers. They should be welcome everywhere. They should be embraced downtown and we should have some kind of facilities for them. When I look at the commons, it doesn't really fit that, and I wish it did. So that's one of the reasons why I won't be supporting this.
Councilmember Palmasana.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, my comments are this. I know this is about thinking big and I admire that. I want to thank Councilmember Fry and Council President and the mayor for their great effort here to date. I think this is a very forthcoming way to handle all of this. Councilmember Fry, you led that forthcomingness about this project. I want to thank the private contributors of this park. This is a fantastic way to have a tangible presence downtown for those corporations that aren't downtown and for those that are to contribute to the green space. This is going to be a real showcase of that, of all of Minnesota. I truly do believe that. And I know that we all want this to be successful. I am in that camp that I would not have been able to vote for the stadium, but I am committed to making it a success since that decision has passed us. City staff and city leaders continue to work very hard on this. This isn't something that's been ditched. I don't see it as a black hole, per se. Revenue bond financing is not property tax money. We are not putting property taxes, past or future, into some kind of compulsory donation here. I wouldn't be able to do that. I wouldn't be able to support it if it had come through in the mayor's budget that way. I wish the timing on this was different, too. A, B, and C should have all gone first, in my opinion. But I don't see a way to go back and change history that way. And so I lean towards supporting this project. Thank you.
Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank all of my colleagues for their consideration and I want to just address a few pieces. First, the phrase "skin in the game" is not mine. That is the term that we have been told by numerous individuals of the business community. I do agree, we have substantial skin in the game already. But, you know, a lot of people have skin in the game, not just for the commons but for downtown as a whole. I mean, just to cite a few examples, the state has $23.5 million into Nicklet Mall. The business community has $25 million into Nicklet Mall, $10 million into the DID, 10% increases in property taxes on a near-annual basis. So we are, we all need to step up here. And I just want to make very clear that the "skin in the game" phrase is not mine. Second, with regard to kids, this is a public realm amenity for everyone. This is not just for adults. This is not just for the wealthy. There's been extensive engagement both with people serving people as well as manual housing to ensure that this is the space that they want. In fact, they were, manual housing was one of the main attendees at some of these events. And for kids, I think we are, and I don't have kids, so I'm not an expert on this, but we are rethinking how kids, in addition to grownups, participate with space. And you don't need to throw up a swingset and a slide and a jungle gym in order for them to have fun. Now we're having more transitional, flexible space where they can, you know, interact with the objects themselves, where they can have a large cart that you can take objects out of it and play around with the toys. They've got mounds on one segment of the park. I mean, if anybody's listened to my pitch about this, a huge pitch is making downtown and the east side a community. Community means that it's not just for yuppies and empty nesters, it's for everybody in between, which is oftentimes comprised of families. So that was a critical piece of creating the design that we now have. So with this $2 million, you know, we're already paying the bills. We are already paying Hargreaves on, I think, a monthly basis. This action gets us credit for the money that's already going out the door. And I think at the end of the day, while we were handed a deal with, yes, a bit of hair on it, we are in the position to make lemonade out of lemons here. Let's see how many cliches I can say in one sentence. And at the end of the day, I really appreciate my colleagues' vision, compromise, and I think this is a true showing of how government should be functioning.
Any further discussion on item nine? Seeing none, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
No.
Johnson.
Mr. Clerk, can I do no on item E and aye on all the other items?
President Johnson.
I'm sorry, my vote?
Yes.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes and 2 nays on the full report. Item 9E has 10 ayes and 3 nays.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing two items forward. The first is authorizing contracts with five different agencies to provide national diabetes prevention program services for at-risk adults who experience racial, ethnic, and/or socioeconomic factors leading to inadequate access to care or poor quality of care. They are the Native American Community Clinic, Neighborhood Health Source, Hanipen County Medical Center, Stairstep Foundation, and OMADA. The second item is confirming appointments to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on Aging. They are appointments of Roland Minda, for Member-at-Large from Ward 3, Jean Greener, Member-at-Large, Ward 7, Raymond Olson, Ward 4, Robert Albee, Ward 6, and Joanne Lees, Ward 13. I will move both items.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull any of those items off or discuss? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Intergovernmental Relations Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you. Madam President, there's one item on the agenda. It is a Fair Housing Implementation Council Cooperative Funding Agreement for Fair Housing Services, and I will move approval of this item.
Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Anyone want to comment on that item? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Committee. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee forwards nine items today for full council consideration. Item 1 is the Recycling Process Service, RFP. Item 2 is authorizing temporary use agreement with Minnesota Department of Transportation for an amendment of existing management agreement to allow the city to store art glass and benches removed from Nicklet Mall during that renovation project. Item 3 is authorizing amendment to the contract with all petroleum maintenance, increasing the contract by $18,050. Item 4 is authorizing amendment to the contract AM Construction, increasing the contract by $7,663 for revised contract total of $188,111 for water plant exterior stabilization project. Item 5 is authorizing amendment to the Engineering Service Agreement with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. Item 6 is approving the impact fees of the Lynn Lake Municipal Parking Lot for a period of September 11, 2015 through August 31, 2016 at $940 per stall. Item 7 is the Car Sharing Pilot Program, authorizing extension of the following contracts to February 29, 2016, and that's for car-to-go and our car. And I understand there will be an amendment associated with that by Councilmember Bender. Item 8 is Recycling Refund Policy Agreement with Hanipen County Amendment, and that's a resolution authorizing that amendment to that organization using the environmental score funds from the Minneapolis Recycling Program and extending that contract to December 31, 2016. And item 9 is accepting a low bid of White Company Incorporated for the estimated expenditure $4,701,760 to furnish and deliver all labor, materials, and incidentals for a stormwater pump station rehabilitation project. Madam Chair, I'm going to move all items minus item 7, and then take up 7 with an amendment following that.
Councilmember Wright has moved the Transportation and Works Report, all items. On item 7, Councilmember Bender, did you have an amendment?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, the amendment is in front of the council. This relates to the timing of our contract negotiations with our car-sharing service providers. Right now, their contract, I believe, ends today. And there are several policy questions to answer related to these contracts, but I just wanted to make sure that those were being answered and discussed in a timely way. And one of the three companies had been requesting more details about their contract negotiations now since early spring. So this, direct staff with the support of Director Kotke in coordination with the Public Works Department, to report back to the TPW Committee no later than October 27, 2015, with an update on negotiations with their car-sharing partners, including outstanding policy questions on car sharing in the city of Minneapolis. So I'll move that staff direction, and then just one more brief comment.
Councilmember Bender has moved the staff direction. That's in front of you for Transportation and Public Works, item number 12. Councilmember Bender.
And just to note some of the policy questions there, you know, these contracts include fees that car-sharing companies pay to the city for parking, on-street parking, as well as parking in critical parking areas, and then also their requirements for service provision across the city. And so there are some policy questions to ask about what it means to provide service throughout the city and any requirements that we would want to attach to that contract. I just want to make sure those, again, those conversations happen in a timely manner.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. When staff did the presentation on this matter, you know, for me, my understanding, what staff was telling us was that they were doing this six-month extension. And, you know, this six-month extension was going to allow them to get their ducks in order. And among, you know, the things that they were going to take care of with this extension was to engage participants in discussion toward development of the best path for a long-term, ongoing car-share program. And so, you know, with regards to this update, I mean, if it accelerates the timeline for staff, I mean, hopefully there is a good reason for it, just because, you know, in some ways, you know, this is a six-month timeline for the staff to really figure out what to do next and to engage every single one of the participants in this car-sharing program. And so, you know, I think when I read this motion, I mean, I don't see that it goes against what staff is asking for in terms of the six months, but, I mean, I feel like in some ways, it does actually push them to go faster than what they might want. And so, you know, I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe Councilmember Yang's comments are correct, that this is consistent with the original action before us. It does allow staff to proceed as they had anticipated. This is just a mechanism which I completely support from Councilmember Bender, to have a check-in, given that there's considerable policy considerations that we probably want to address midstream when we have a little more information before, as before a final decision. I think this is just an easier way to really tackle broad questions at the policy level while we're getting ready to implement a whole new framework. So I appreciate the amendment and how it was actually produced and what it's intended to do.
On Councilmember Bender's staff direction, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that carries. The staff direction has been made. Then on the Transportation and Works Report, items 1 through 9, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee Report. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means bring forward seven items for your consideration today. The first three items are settlement claims. Item number four is the Flower Exchange Building Contract Amendment. This terminates our first right of refusal at the request of the building owner. Item number five is a bid for Norstrand Communications, does businesses' black box network services for telephone system software and equipment upgrade. Item number six is with Risk Master Software Contract. It's an amendment with Computer Science Corporation for the Risk Management Division's software program. And then the final item is the contract also with Norstrand Communications for help and service desk implementation. Move all seven items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report, all items. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means bring forward seven items for your consideration today. The first three items are settlement claims. Item number four is the Flower Exchange Building Contract Amendment. This terminates our first right of refusal at the request of the building owner. Item number five is a bid for Norstrand Communications, does businesses' black box network services for telephone system software and equipment upgrade. Item number six is with Risk Master Software Contract. It's an amendment with Computer Science Corporation for the Risk Management Division's software program. And then the final item is the contract also with Norstrand Communications for help and service desk implementation. Move all seven items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report, all items. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee Report. And that committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means bring forward seven items for your consideration today. The first three items are settlement claims. Item number four is the Flower Exchange Building Contract Amendment. This terminates our first right of refusal at the request of the building owner. Item number five is a bid for Norstrand Communications, does businesses' black box network services for telephone system software and equipment upgrade. Item number six is with Risk Master Software Contract. It's an amendment with Computer Science Corporation for the Risk Management Division's software program. And then the final item is the contract also with Norstrand Communications for help and service desk implementation. Move all seven items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report, all items. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Resolutions, and we have a number of honorary resolutions. The first, so I'll just go through them and we can vote on them all together. Resolution recognizing Pancreatic Cancer Action Network. Resolution declaring September 15, 2015, Lymphoma Awareness Day in the city of Minneapolis. Passage of the resolution declaring September 17, 2015, Leukemia and Lymphoma Society Awareness Day in the city of Minneapolis. Passage of a resolution recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Passage of a resolution recognizing National Payroll Week. Passage of a resolution declaring Community Gardening, 20 Gardening Day, 2015. And passage of a resolution recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day. Any discussion on any of those resolutions? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, on National Voter Registration Day, September 22 is National Voter Registration Day, which was first started in 2012. It is now an unofficial 50-state holiday and the largest one-day effort of the year to register votes. The theme of National Voter Registration Day is celebrating democracy in America. Obviously, voting is the cornerstone of our process. Everyone should be participating, and the goal is not to advocate on behalf of candidates or parties, but to make sure that people have full access. So to coincide with this day, we're having a large event, and that'll be a program here at Minneapolis City Hall in the Rotunda. It will start at 11:30 a.m. Again, this is on September 22. So September 22, 11:30 a.m. in Minneapolis City Hall Rotunda. The program will include our Secretary of State, Steve Simon, former mayor Don Frazier, who voted for the passage of the Voting Rights Act, Tammy Patrick of the Bipartisan Policy Center for Democracy. We'll also have local music legend Robert Robinson, who's going to perform with a very special joint gospel choir. That segment in particular is going to bring down the house. And so we're very excited about this event and really appreciate all the work that the clerks and voter services, clerks' office, elections, and voter services have been doing to put it all together.
Any further discussion on the resolutions? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have new business. And under new business, the first item is a notice. Councilmember Gordon gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting in the city council, a subject matter of ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending zoning definitions to include limited production and processing. That notice is given. Next, we have a notice by Councilmember Andrew Johnson of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting in the city council, the subject matter of ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending regulations relating to signs. That notice is given. And on item 3, Councilmember Glidden and Councilmember Bender give notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting in the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the Minneapolis Code of Ordinance by adding there to a new Title Any discussion on those? Seeing none, Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Quincy.
Aye.
Worsani.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have resolutions, and we have a number of honorary resolutions. The first, so I'll just go through them, and we can vote on them all together. Resolution recognizing pancreatic cancer action network. Resolution declaring September 15, 2015, lymphoma awareness day in the city of Minneapolis. Passage of the resolution declaring September 17, 2015, leukemia and lymphoma society awareness day in the city of Minneapolis. Passage of a resolution recognizing national voter registration day. Passage of a resolution recognizing national payroll week. Passage of a resolution declaring community gardening day 2015. And passage of a resolution recognizing breast cancer awareness month and metastatic breast cancer awareness day. Any discussion on any of those resolutions? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Briefly, on National Voter Registration Day, September 22 is National Voter Registration Day, which was first started in 2012. It is now an unofficial 50-state holiday and the largest one-day effort of the year to register votes. The theme of National Voter Registration Day is celebrating democracy in America. Obviously, voting is the cornerstone of our process. Everyone should be participating, and the goal is not to advocate on behalf of candidates or parties, but to make sure that people have full access. So to coincide with this day, we're having a large event, and that'll be a program here at Minneapolis City Hall in the Rotunda. It will start at 11:30 a.m. Again, this is on September 22. So September 22, 11:30 a.m. in Minneapolis City Hall Rotunda. The program will include our Secretary of State, Steve Simon, former Mayor Don Frazier, who voted for the passage of the Voting Rights Act, Tammy Patrick of the Bipartisan Policy Center for Democracy. We'll also have local music legend, Robert Robinson, who's going to perform with a very special joint gospel choir. That segment in particular is going to bring down the House. And so we're very excited about this event and really appreciate all the work that the clerks and voter services, clerks' offices, elections, and voter services have been doing to put it all together.
Any further discussion on the resolutions? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have new business, and under new business, the first item is a notice. Councilmember Gordon gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting in the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending zoning definitions to include limited production and processing. That notice is given. Next, we have a notice by Councilmember Andrew Johnson of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting in the city council, the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, amending regulations relating to signs. That notice is given.